Recording.
To get started, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is located in, on the table as you enter. It's also on our website. There is also an automatic external defibrillator that is on the back wall of the legislative chambers. And with that, I would ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
I wait 10, 15 minutes and I go look inside and, but you know, I think just.
So we're going to move the agenda around just a little bit today. We are going to open with the Douglas County Board of Commissioners and we are going to do the presentations, or recognition and proclamations. And then we're going to do an agenda item under Community Services. And then we'll go to introduction of some guests that we have in our chamber today. And then we'll go back to our normal agenda. So, right now, do we have roll call for the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners?
Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh, failing commitment, he can't be here today. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Present. So the first recognition and proclamation, I would ask that the family of Tom Doyle, our Douglas County engineer, please come forward to the podium. And for those in the audience, Mr. Doyle was our county engineer since 1983 and he has recently passed away on August 6th. And so this is his family, part of his family. And we're going to read a resolution in his honor. And then there'll probably be a few words and then we'll ask the family to introduce and say a few words if they would like to as well. So the resolution reads, whereas Mr. Thomas, Tom Doyle, had a passion for public service, dedicating more than five decades of his life to serving others. And whereas Mr. Doyle began his career with Douglas County in March of 1983, when he was appointed Douglas County engineer. And whereas he grew up in South Omaha, where he excelled in athletics and academics. He was a Golden Gloves boxing champion and a talented high school debater. And whereas Mr. Doyle worked as a young man to help support his family in a variety of jobs. And whereas he was ambitious and dedicated, working his way through college at Omaha University, where he earned a degree in chemistry and passed the professional engineering exam. And whereas he married Anna Rose Doyle in 1951, they raised three sons and two daughters. And whereas his role as county engineer, Mr. Doyle supervised highway construction, maintenance, and snow clearing for 39 years. And was known for his wealth of knowledge of Douglas County history. And whereas Mr. Doyle was involved in many community organizations, including the Easter Chapter Nebraska Society of Professional Engineers, Nebraska Association of County Engineers and Highway Superintendents, and the State of Nebraska Board of Examiners for County Highway and City Street Superintendents. And whereas Mr. Doyle died on August 6th, 2022, but he will be remembered as a dedicated elected official who will be sorely missed. Now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby honors the life of Mr. Tom Doyle and recognizes his longtime commitment to public service in Douglas County, dated this day, this 30th day of August, 2022. With that, I would ask for a motion to approve. And with that, are there any comments that anyone would like to make? As I was reading this resolution, there, Tom was involved in a breakfast club, if you will, on Saturdays and my husband attended it and I attended every once in a while. And I got to hear a lot of the stories that talked about him being a Golden Glove champion, him being good in athletics and what he loved about academics. But most of all, when I first got on this board, there was a big discussion about city county merger. And we talked for hours and hours and days and weeks. And he was involved in a committee that we launched to look at that issue. And just the knowledge that he had stored up here about everything was truly amazing. But what I'll miss about him the most is his gentleness as a public official. His smile and his friendship. And I see that love and commitment of him in all of you. And you will definitely, you'll be very proud that you be here carrying on his legacy for many, many years. And again, we're very, very sorry for the loss, but he was a very special man to all of us and to the citizens of Douglas County.
Thank you.
Did you want to introduce yourselves and your family, Mark?
Yeah, if I can. This is, you know, we've been through, like we all do with aging parents a lot. And, you know, we got through all the services and those things. This, for some reason, this is even a little more emotional for me. This is, you know, you're his other family. And you know that, it's been a long time. He's been your county engineer, your citizens' county engineer, as you said, for a long time. And even before that, I know most of you know that he had a public service career that started with running for the Omaha School Board in the 60s when I was a little guy. And missing on, they used to run on a slate. He missed it by one and then he ran for the city council and he missed it by one. So this is a story that Commissioner Kavanaugh is not here, right?
Nope.
Well, it involves his dad. So, and his uncle.
Yeah.
Because we're all South Omaha, we grew up with the Munleys and the Kavanahs and, so he was going to run for the Public Service Commission. And I remember a meeting in our kitchen on Polk Street where a couple of the more powerful state senators showed up at that time and, you know, it would be Bill Skarda. There's a couple of them. Gene Mahoney. Maybe Terry Carpenter, but I don't remember for sure. And they said, you know, that's Jimmy Munley's spot. But this new governor team said he'd appoint you labor commissioner. What do you think about that? And he was 35 years old and he said something to the effect of, yeah, what is it? Yeah, I'll take that. Well, interestingly, he becomes the labor commissioner at a time where Omaha had just been through a lot of civil unrest in the 60s and the packing houses were consolidating and families were moving out of Omaha that could to places like Cherokee, Iowa, like our neighbors, and Worthington, Minnesota. Not everybody could move to those communities. And the North Omaha community was left with skyrocketing unemployment. And dad's background put him into a position where he was able to use some of his contacts growing up, hire them to run the local offices because people didn't know how to get resources. So I know the newspaper said, you know, the accomplishment of the Harrison Street Interchange. And this is my chance to say, I think he felt that was his biggest professional accomplishment of being labor commissioner at a time where someone like him, who has such a different perspective, made a great impact on the community. And he told me a couple of weeks ago, he said, yeah, my going away for the Labor Department was really interesting. It was at Joe Tess. And it was put on by the North Omaha community. He said it was the most interesting, funnest party he'd been at, leaving a job. Then he went on to the roads and then, of course, he landed, he landed here in his county position, which he loved. He loved working with all of you and all of the commissioners that have come and gone in the last 40 years. So, thank you for that. Now I'd like to introduce my family, which I should have done first. My brother Kevin, fellow county employee of yours.
37 years.
37 years.
37 years.
That's public service too. My oldest daughter, my oldest child Gabriella. My middle child, which we have in common, Rayanna, who is also an engineer. And this is our future daughter-in-law Chloe, our youngest son Luke's fiancee, who couldn't be here today. Aldona couldn't be here, she's taking care of some grandkids, so we could be here, which is a good job too. So the rest of our family, thanks you all for remembering, or remembering that and passing the resolution and your kind words and our condolences to you and your family too. And you mentioned that breakfast club. It's the darnedest thing. Once in a while I was able to get an invitation.
Yes, I remember, yes.
But for some reason, this guy's cousins were always there. I think because one's a county official, maybe. I don't know about the other one, my board member. You never got there, did you?
They don't invite, no. No, they don't invite me.
Yeah, Commissioner Friend and I worked at First National together, so. Kevin?
Yeah, I'm good.
Yeah?
I'm all right.
Well, we thank you all for being here. Do you guys want to say anything? No? Okay, okay.
Yeah, thanks for letting me share a few stories. As Commissioner Borson knows, I probably could share hundreds, if not thousands.
Just like your dad.
But I never got it, but I didn't get them all. I don't know them all.
Just like your dad.
Sincerely, thank you.
Why don't you come around? We're going to get a picture and could we have everyone vote first though?
Where do we, where do you want to?
Just come in the front here and we'll.
I'm not used to being a guest at.
Yeah, I know, right?
Motion passes. Commissioner Garcia is voting yes. So motion passes six to zero. And Commissioner Kavanaugh, want to note for the record that he would certainly be supporting this resolution if he were present today. Thank you.
Okay, here we go. Ready? One, two, three. And we'll do one more. One, two, three. Great, thank you.
Okay. We do have one other recognition that we'll go ahead and do. And it's the following county employee, Barbara Bruce, who worked for the Douglas County Health Center for 14 years. She is unable to attend, but we do thank her for her service and her dedication to Douglas County. And we will go ahead and get this resolution to her. With that, is there a motion to approve? Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
And now we'll just scooch over to the Community Services Committee. There's one item, a discussion and consideration of intent to partner with Omaha Public Power District, OPPD, on a grant application for a potential solar generation project to be located on the closed State Street landfill property. And with us today is Mr. Kent Holmes, who is our Environmental Services Director. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners Kent Holmes, Environmental Services Director. This item comes to you today initially to look at partnering with OPPD as they apply for some potential infrastructure grant funding that would assist in looking at this potential project for solar generation on the former State Street landfill. And as the resolution has been crafted for your consideration, it does put in there that this is somewhat preliminary and that we still have some due diligence to do when they come back with a proposal to look and make sure that we're going to be able to do this feasibly on the State Street landfill, given our current regulatory requirements for post-closure at that facility. So with us today, we have several representatives from OPPD and like them to come forward and they can kind of explain a little bit more about the grant application and what they're looking for.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Sonia Golombieski, OPPD. Senior.
Just scooch the microphones a little bit closer together. There you go.
Okay. Sonia Golombieski, last name is G-O-L-E. M is in mom, B is in boy, I-E-W-S-K-I. It's 12 letters long, I know it. I am the senior account executive for Douglas County with OPPD. The address is 444 South 16th Street Mall. OPPD is asking today to partner with Douglas County on a grant for the Nebraska Environmental Trust to cover the cost of an initial study as well as eventual installation of solar on the 120th and State Street landfill location. The grant application is due next Tuesday, which is why we are here today, asking for that ability to partner with Douglas County and filing for that grant application.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle, did you want to say a few words about it?
Yeah, so this started back, I've been a commissioner for almost two years now. And one of the first things I wanted to do is kind of see what we can do to address climate change and what can we do for renewable energy sources. And so I met with OPPD folks with my dad, who was on the board at the time. And he was pretty energetic about it, attending meetings by phone. And so, but bottom line is it took some time to kind of figure out where this all fits and everything. So really today is the first step in order to look at some serious renewable energy sources. And we've got that plot of land where the landfill had been. And there, of course, are some engineering types of things that have to be done to make sure it's safe to put a solar panel farm, I guess, on there. But the bottom line is this is just the first step. So just to make it clear, there's no money committed one way or another at this point. The grant funding will help look into the feasibility of this type of thing. And then down the road, once that study comes through, we can determine if it's something that we can get behind as partners with OPPD. So that's what the purpose of today's vote is.
Okay. Commissioner Morgan?
Commissioner Boyle, what's the amount that you're hopefully going to get from this grant?
Yeah, so I'm going to leave that to our account exec.
I was going to say, I think initially the cost for the initial feasibility study is about $30,000. And then the additional cost is about 30% higher than what standard solar costs are. But those costs are actually changing a lot right now, as everybody knows, with supply chain and other issues going on. So we don't have a final number for what installation would cost, but the feasibility grant is about $30,000. No problem.
So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
All right, any further comments or questions? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Thanks for being here. All right, with that, we will, could I get a motion to recess out of the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners and enter the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
And roll call for the Board of Equalization.
Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Present. The agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, August 23rd, 2022. And item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, September 13th, 2022, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls or increased value on property. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next, the citizen comments. Anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue. Omaha, Nebraska, 68922.
I am not good at this. So she said.
Can we please, for those on Zoom, mute, please?
Speaking of equalization, the Constitution does have an equality clause. But I'm here today to give you an opportunity to open your ears, your eyes, and your discussions to growing groundswell opinion and common sense of the people that the last election didn't have a lot of integrity to it. We're beginning to feel that a lot of you, election people particularly, and officials all the way up the ladder, were deceived. We're not saying anybody was criminal or lying, but you were deceived all the way along about the security of the machines and the election procedures with ballot boxes, registration, et cetera, et cetera. I won't dwell on that. But I want Douglas County to have an opportunity to be one of those counties that's not the big county that will refuse to listen. I was at an all-day seminar, my third, on election security. And the tactics that we, the people, will be using is to go to, number one, our smallest counties that will listen and talk back and forth with us. And invite the county sheriff to go with us. Because they're usually amenable to helping the people when there's maybe some problems that need to be looked into. The large counties are kind of looked down on as being somewhat uncooperative. And I think I have to agree with them, based on my experience over the last four to six years here. So here's an opportunity for you to invite these people, I'll tell you who it was, to make a presentation, a joint presentation with the city and the county. Invite Brian Cruz. I had a brief conversation with him at a funeral. I said, Brian, I just want to let you know that we think you were deceived and all the way up the line with the election procedures. People were deceived, which means we feel the common sense of it, that we were lied to. And that pits us against each other. So this needs to be opened up. Because this is a really fast-growing groundswell movement. It may smack you in the face before you know it. I had a nice conversation with Dodge County Commissioners. They didn't have a hard-to-understand agenda. They sat there and talked back and forth with us. They didn't interrupt anybody. They didn't call anybody out of order and they listened to this presentation. They're open to it. They'll probably be talking about it maybe before you people will. But this is your opportunity. And then finally, before I probably get run out, I'm a little hot under the collar about something today. Before I walked in the door, I was informed that if I caused any problems whatsoever, I'm out of here for good. Excuse me, I'd like to know who the hell said that? Who ordered our deputy to inform me of that? I think you violated my rights, you violated his rights. You violated the other taxpayer's rights by asking him to do an illegal act. You're violating the Constitution. And whichever one of you, maybe it was the city council, maybe it was all of you, need to be held accountable for that. So let's open up the next portion of this meeting to have a back-and-forth discussion about it. What has been so egregious about my behavior that I can be kept out of this building for perpetuity against the Constitution and the Nebraska State Constitution and the Open Meetings Act?
One minute.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next are our resolutions, Resolutions D through G. We have no need for executive session and that motion could include adjournment if so desired. We have no need for executive session, and that motion could include adjournment if so desired. Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Now we will go back to the Board of Commissioners. And do you want to just do another roll call for, for that, just so we have it?
Yeah, yeah. Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Yes. Before we get started with the agenda, I do want to take a moment to welcome our guests that we have here and ask Val... Where did Val go? McPherson from, oh, from UNO to come on down and give us a little background of these wonderful young people who are here to learn and hopefully share some of their experiences at some point with us about their trip here. But tell us about them, Val.
Good morning again, Val McPherson, 6415 Glenwood Road, Omaha, Nebraska. It is once again my honor to bring to you a delegation of international visitors. This time, 30 young professionals from Bosnia-Herzegovina. They have been selected by our embassy in that country as the future leaders of that country. They are here on a program called BOLD, which is a civic engagement program. They will be here in Omaha for four weeks. And then they will travel first to New York City and then to Washington, DC. Well, they will, of course, meet with the State Department in regards to their experience. I would like to thank the Commissioners for the warm welcome you gave them earlier in your chambers. And I would now like all 30 of the BOLD participants to please stand. Do you have a moment if one of them would like to make a comment?
Any of them? Yes, come on down. Yes, come on down. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm so sorry, I don't know how to address you properly, but consider yourself addressed as best as I could. My name is Amina. My address is in Bosnia, so I will not go further into that. We are so honored to, for you to have us here. And we appreciate that, the space you gave us to learn and to hopefully make our country a better place and more community engagement being spread in our country. And we hope that we will honor this opportunity and that the State Department will be pleased with us and that we are the right people to be chosen by the embassy. Thank you.
I think you're off to a good start. I think there was someone over here that wanted to say something? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Sara Stojkovic. I'm very glad to be here. And to be, we are honored to be actually here and to have the opportunity to see this meeting and see in general how this country operates. It was my, it was my thinking that United States of America is a great country and that is one of the best, if not the best. And being here today, I am sure of that. I think that United States of America is a perfect country because even though it has challenges and issues, when I say perfection, it is perfection in comparison to other countries. So that is why I think that you have a great country. Keep it up.
Oh, thank you. And Val, if, what I would like is, I mean, this is a long way for these young folks to, to come. And if we could just very quickly have each one come and tell us their name and where they're from, that would be wonderful. Or if they're studying a certain topic, that would be good too. Or what their interest is, that would be good.
Great, let's, let's do it.
Just everybody line up and one by one, give us your name and where you're from and what your interest is. And if it's civic engagement, just say civic engagement.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Srijan Yelisich. I'm from Bosnia-Herzegovina. My civic engagement project is youth participation on elections. I would like to find the solutions, how to motivate more young people to, to vote and how to present them real information from their candidates, what they're, for what they will fight for when they be elected. And as Sara said, I'm really glad to be here and really impressed about this body and your work. I don't say that we don't have, that we cannot, in Bosnia-Herzegovina, said this, but unfortunately, we don't have that opportunity or we don't have that practice that you have here. So we have a lot of to learn from you, and you should be really proud of this.
Thank you, welcome.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having us here. My name is Amar Bulivasich. I'm, I have a bachelor degree in international relations. Currently, I'm doing my master's degree in human rights and democracy. Back at home, I'm, I work in media. Also, I'm following like all the sessions of our local assemblies, probably. I'm the only citizen back at Moham Town that's listening to every second of the, of the session of, of the meetings of our municipal council. So basically, I have definitely experience to share with them and from, from you to show them how, how to do some things.
Thank you and welcome. Good morning.
Good morning.
Hello, everyone. I am Edna. I want to thank you for having us here. I'm coming from Sarajevo, the capital city from Bosnia and Herzegovina. My civic engagement project is about developing emotional intelligence in kids. I'm finishing my fourth year of microbiology studies. And I just want to thank you for this experience.
Well, thank you and welcome. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Sarah. And I come from the mid, mid-part of the country, from a small town. But I graduated in capital city, I graduated tourism and environmental protection. And my project is ecological awareness in my local community. And also, I, I want to implement different ecological, small, different ecological projects in my community. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Sadara Salimovic. I'm currently pursuing my degree in international relations, diplomacy, and international law. And my civic engagement project is related to the immigration crisis in Bosnia and Herzegovina related to refugees and migrants. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Aina, Aina Meshch. I come from Sarajevo, the capital of the city, of the country. I'm studying international relations. And my civic engagement interest is peace-building and conflict resolution. And I'm, I have to say that I'm really happy to be here to experience firsthand this like politics on a smaller scale, because that was also my interest like before, but I didn't really have the chance, chance to be present here. And thank you very much for having us. I hope, well, we are really happy to be here, so thank you.
Thank you and welcome. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Irina Jarec. I come from a smaller town in Bosnia that's called Obol. The reason why I'm here is because I would like to engage more in social entrepreneurship field in my country, to be specific, in the field of sustainable development. So that part with solar panels was very interesting to me. And also, I am a recent graduate in the field of international relations and European studies. Thank you for having us here and for this incredible opportunity. Thank you.
Good morning.
Oh, you can see me. Good morning. My name is Irina, and I'm studying marketing. But my interest here is to educate and engage young people in voting. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome. Good morning.
Good morning. Hello, everyone. My name is Katarina Radovich. I live in Sarajevo, which we all know is the capital of Bosnia and Herzegovina. My civic engagement program is about helping disabled children in my community. Also, I'm 19 years old and I enrolled law school. So that's it. Thank you.
Congratulations and welcome. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Adlizacnovich. I come from Mostar. I'm 18 years old. I have just been enrolled into business and management. And I will be studying that in October. I'm pleased to be here, so thank you all so much.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Farzrizic. I'm 19 years old and I'm from Sarajevo, the capital. My project is related to counseling and mental health. And I just want to use this opportunity to thank you for a warm welcome. And Omaha is a great city and I love it here, so thank you so much.
Great, thank you and welcome. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Peter Zelenka. I come from Mostar, which is the biggest city in the south of Bosnia and Herzegovina. And my civic engagement program is to help elementary school children, children in my hometown to use internet access in a safer way. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Sunzica. I come from Meleci, small municipality in eastern part of Bosnia and Herzegovina. My bachelor degree is international relations and diplomacy. And currently, I'm student, master student of security and peace studies. And my project idea is peace education. And thank you very much.
Thank you, welcome. Good morning.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Alex. And I'm really nice, I'm really glad to be here. Thank you for having us, once again. I'm studying political sciences. And my project, civic engagement project, is about environmental issues and how to transfer waste materials into renewable goods. And once again, thank you.
Thank you and welcome. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Yelena Savic. I finished law. My project, project is about media literacy, disinformation in media. Thank you.
Very good, thank you, welcome. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for having us, first and foremost. My name is Ida. I actually graduated from Academy of Dramatic Arts. My aspiration is to become Ronald Reagan or Waldemir Zelensky of Bosnia. And my civic engagement project is related to culture and arts. Thank you.
Very good and welcome. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Vivian Zelenka. I study medicine. And the, my project that I'm working on is about the lack of access for the community of disabled people in my hometown. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Sonia Kyata Perich. I come from Mostar as well. I would like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak and to present ourselves. I'm a student of architecture. And I've been working on civic engagement projects for seven years now with youth empowerment and animal rights. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for having us here. It's really an honor. My name is Daria Knijevic, and I'm studying political science at the University of Mostar. And my civic engagement project is about women in politics and raising the levels of female voters.
Very good. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Mahir Polich. I'm coming from Bosnia and Herzegovina. I am primarily interested in anti-corruption, because corruption is a burning issue in Bosnia and Herzegovina. And thank you for having us.
Thank you and welcome.
Ladies and gentlemen, respected Commissioners, my name is Martin Mikulic. And first of all, I would like to thank you for taking your time to listen to us. I study political science at the University of Mostar. And my main area of interest here is working on a project that would work to eradicate hate speech and inflammatory rhetoric in Bosnia and Herzegovina, which is a really big issue. And if I may share only one note with you, it is, I just said that to my colleague that I really feel like a family atmosphere here. It really feels like all of you are cohesive. And I, my first impression is that every citizen of Omaha is welcome here, that they can share, share their concerns. So my wish to you is that you stay cohesive, stay friendly to each other, and that you work together to resolve all issues concerning people of Omaha. So I wish you and the people of Omaha all the best. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. It's a great pleasure to be here and meet you all. My name is Bakir. I'm studying dental medicine in Sarajevo. And currently, I'm developing three project ideas. One is about business opportunities for young people in Bosnia and Herzegovina. The second one is about media literacy, especially in regards of fake news. And the third one is about awareness raising and projects about war crimes that happened in Bosnia and Herzegovina in the 90s. And that are sadly still a burden for the progress of our society today. Thank you very much.
Thank you and welcome. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Anis. I'm 25 years old. I'm coming from Mostar. I have a master's degree in agriculture. And my project is about connecting young people with diaspora from European Union. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Amir Juliman. I am a student of management from South Bosnia. My project seeks to connect students from Mostar and our diaspora for work-related opportunities, which are severely lacking in my town. Can I just say that my family, who grew up under socialism in Yugoslavia, was a bit opposed to this program because of some stereotypes about America being a dangerous place and Americans being rude and similar. What I have seen, however, is the warmest, most kind people I have met in my life. I fell in love with Omaha and with these people, and I wish you all the best. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome. Good morning.
Good morning again. My name is Sara Stojkovic. I'm also from Bosnia and Herzegovina. I'm about to graduate with a degree in political science and pursue my master's degree in international relations. My project is in the field of conflict resolution, which is very important for, for Bosnia and Herzegovina. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you and welcome. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Antonio. I come from Mostar. I'm 25 years old. I finished law school. And my point of interest in civic engagement is environmental issues. And I'm very glad to hear that this solar panel grant passed constantly, so that's it.
Very good. Thank you, welcome. Good morning.
Hi, everyone. My name is Amina, again. And I am a final-year student of biochemistry. And I wanna, my civic engagement project is with STEM youth education. And I wanna, basically, I wanna educate a future astronaut of the European Space Agency. And that's my civic engagement.
Very good, welcome. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity. I think it means a lot to all of us to see that actually people are listening to other people in other countries. This is something that we are not used. My name is Srijan. I come from a very small and rural community in Bosnia. I do live in Sarajevo now, but for the past 10 years, I'm working on the issues of youth. I work in a youth foundation. And I was amazed this morning to listen about your youth club and what are you doing for the youth? Because youth are the future. And I hope to learn a lot today also. But the things that we are learning, learning in Omaha are amazing. And thank you so much for this opportunity.
Well, thank you and welcome.
If you'll allow me one more moment.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to mention that the selection process for this BOLD program is very similar to the process that's used by the State Department for the International Visitor Leadership Program, which is a program that I've been bringing you visitors on for the last 20 years. And this is a program that was started just prior to World War II. And the alumni of that program, and once again, I stress that, like that program, the BOLD program has selected the best and the brightest, this time from Bosnia and Herzegovina. That selection process that is being used has resulted in over 500 of the alumni becoming president or prime minister of their country. So I think there's a very high probability, especially after what you just heard, that you have one or more future presidents or prime ministers of Bosnia and Herzegovina with you today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Val. And we do have a couple. Commissioner Morgan?
Well, first, thank you, Commissioner Borgesen, for having these young people come down and introduce themselves. And just want to say, so very impressive. They will be... They will be world leaders, I'm certain. And Val, thank you for bringing young people down from time to time. We really look forward to that. And I know I can speak for all the commissioners. We really appreciate it tremendously to see a group like this, just outstanding individuals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Friend?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Val, yes, thanks for bringing them in. I echo Commissioner Morgan's statements. Just, um, if you don't remember anything else I said, remember this. This is the, this is the best board in the state. You don't have to go to the city council meeting in the afternoon. Have them take you out and play golf or go look at soybean fields or cornfields, because you'll get everything you need right here. Thank, thanks for being here, and thanks for all the work you guys are doing. Thank you, Val.
Commissioner Boyle?
In case you didn't realize, Commissioner Friend is our comic relief, but he's, he's also really smart, in spite of what you may think of those types of statements. But just to get, and just, this is just something interesting you may not know is, uh, we, Marianne Borgeson was talking about how we are a political board, the Democrats and Republicans on here. And just, just to give you an example, so Commissioner Friend and I get along really well, and we are opposite politically. But we, I think that's something just to say how you can work together, even though you have, you come from a different place and you just have different belief systems, that there are lots of things we have in common, and then so we, our goal ultimately is to do the right thing for, for our community. A lot of the things that I heard you all say, those are the same issues that we have here. So I was really impressed with the things you were saying. It's like talking about legitimate elections. I mean, we, 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 we don't struggle with that. I think we have a faction of the community that thinks we don't have, have legal elections, but, but really, we've done a lot of research and a lot of homework to make sure that they're safe. Women in politics, of course. Uh, we, fifty percent of the population should be represented on fifty percent of the government boards. Climate issues, of course. You heard the resolution we put forth earlier about grants to help with renewable energy projects. You talked about how the youth are our future. And so the things that we're doing in our correction system to, to help with that are evident. And then, as you are all here, if you are the future, I'm really happy. So I think that you're gonna do amazing things, and to know that you're gonna carry us to the, over the next decades, it gives me a sense of peace and calm. So thank you for coming.
And I also want to just say how impressed I am with each and every one of you. And Commissioner Boyle was right. I was thinking the same thing as you were talking. It's kind of like, well, we have that. Well, we're taking, well, we're talking about that issue. So a lot of those things, um, we have in common. And I would open to you that, you know, if you want to email at any time, you have our email address, email us, ask us a question, keep in contact. We would love to hear where you all go with your expertise that you've talked to us about today. We wish you all the luck in the world to be able to be successful in your endeavors. And you definitely have captured our hearts, for sure. So thank you for being with us today. So we will continue on with our agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. We have Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, August twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two. And Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, September sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next is our consent agenda, items A through K. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
We did recognition and proclamation, so we'll move to citizen comments. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to presentations. We have a presentation on the Douglas County Youth Center, first half of two thousand and twenty-two data. Commissioner Rogers, did you want to say anything as the opener?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, no, just want to say, um, that the day, that this is in part of regularly trying to keep the board updated. Once the data is introduced, hopefully the discussion will go toward some ideas in regards to addressing some of the matters that come in. So with that, Abby.
All right. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Dr. Abby Karba, I'm the data administrator for Douglas County's Juvenile Justice Initiative. So this graphic shows our average daily population for the last four and a half years. So we have been gradually decreasing from two thousand and nineteen through two thousand and twenty-one. For the first six months of this year, we've started to tick back up a little bit. But because there's some flexibility in where we will wind up at the end of the year, just because this is the average and it is only for the first six months, if our trends stay consistent, we will still wind up with our population at the end of the year being lower than it was in our pre-pandemic years. I also do want to note that the number of girls in detention has steadily gone down, and this year we're averaging about five girls a day in detention. This is that same graphic, just broken up by month. You can see this year, our average daily population peaked in June at sixty-eight youth. With the exception of two thousand and twenty, there appears to be a pretty consistent pattern in our monthly average daily populations increasing during June and then again in July. June of two thousand and twenty-two is the highest that we've, highest population level we've seen since November of two thousand and twenty. But again, we are still lower than we were in those pre-pandemic years. About fifty-seven percent of the youth detained so far this year have been charged in juvenile court, and just under forty percent were charged in adult court. During the COVID period, so between June of two thousand and twenty and May of two thousand and twenty-one, we saw almost an even split in the youth in the court type. So you can see those lines coming very closely together. And that gap is starting, started to close again this year between April and June. Our admissions overall have been on a pretty downward trend since two thousand and seven. There have been some ebbs and flows, but for the most part, we're trending steadily downwards. We've had just under three, three hundred and fifty admissions during the first half of two thousand and twenty-two, and we've had two hundred and ninety-five unique youth. So that means that about fifteen percent of the youth we've had come into detention have been in more than once already this year. Admissions for youth charged in adult court have remained relatively stable. We saw some modest increases between two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and eighteen, and then decreases from two thousand and nineteen to the present. The bigger population reduction that we've seen has been in that juvenile court population. So far, for the first six months of this year, we've had two hundred and ninety-four youth admitted with charges in juvenile court and forty-one youth in detention who have been charged as adults. This slide focuses just on the admissions for those youth who are in our juvenile court system. So since two thousand and sixteen, we've held more youth in DCYC who are on a pre-adjudication status than who are only in for an adjudicated status. Uh, one important thing about this data is that it is possible for youth who are on probation to pick up additional charges while they are under supervision and be placed in detention pending disposition. So if this happens, these youth are counted in that pre-adjudication population because, again, they do have an open court case pending. And the reason for detention is most likely related to that new offense. So far, we've had two hundred and thirty-three youth admitted on pre-adjudication status and sixty-one adjudicated admissions. The adjudicated number that we have is slightly higher relative to where we were last year, so this is something that we're keeping an eye on as we progress through the second half of the year. Now, the pre-adjudicated population can be split into those who are detained on technical violations and those who are detained on new admissions. The use of detention for youth with technical probation violations has been going down since two thousand and fourteen. And when youth are admitted into DCYC, it's generally for unlawful absences, failures to appear in court, or violations of their supervision conditions. When we look at new law violations for those pre-adjudicated youth in juvenile court, we see their numbers have also been trending downward since two thousand and nineteen, but they are high, they do account for more of the population than youth admitted on technical violations. As far as these new offenses go, theft, assault, and weapons possession and drug possessions are the most common offenses for two thousand and twenty-two, and that's consistent with what we've seen over the past three years. So now, if we look over at those kids who have been charged in adult court, we see, again, more youth are admitted for new charges than they are for technical violations. With regards to the offenses for these youth, it's primarily robbery, weapons possession, and weapons use offenses. One thing I do want to note that's not shown on this graphic is that we do have eleven youth in DCYC who are pending first-degree murder charges. They're not shown on this graphic because that has, that has not been the most common type of offense for youth admitted, but I do think it's important to talk about. These kids tend to stay at DCYC much longer than other youth, given the severity of their charges. And this does have an influence on our average daily population and our lengths of stay. So this is our admissions by court type, broken down by the age of the offender. So seventy-five percent of the youth admitted this year were between the ages of fifteen and seventeen, and this is consistent with the population trends from previous years. And about sixty percent of our youth charged as adults are seventeen years old at the time they are admitted. We continue to see the over-representation of youth in color in our detention population. And to date, we've had about seventy-nine percent of the youth detained on charges in juvenile court have been non-white, and eighty-eight percent of our youth charged in adult court held in detention, are youth of color. And if we compare this to the overall Douglas County population, we can see that only about twenty-eight percent of the general population is not white. This issue of over-representation, particularly with regard to black and Hispanic youth, is not unique to DCYC. There is a JDAI work group looking into this issue, as it's something that exists across all justice system points. And we also have the Title II racial and ethnic disparity grants going out to community providers, which you voted on earlier in this meeting. And those services will really target prevention, early intervention programs and services towards youth of color. Uh, this shows a map of our county and where our admissions have been coming from for the last fifteen years. We see those heavy concentrations in the eastern half of our county. About one-third of our admissions each year come from six-eight-one-one-one, six-eight-one-zero-four, and six-eight-one-zero-seven. And then this is our population, our snapshot population from two weeks ago. We see the same geographic trends. In this graphic, however, six-eight-one-one-zero is the third highest instead of six-eight-one-zero-seven. Uh, with regard to length of stay, we can see that youth who are charged in juvenile court have stayed at DCYC for an average of about six weeks or forty-four days this year. And our youth charged as adults stay on, a little bit under four months, at a hundred and ten days. Over the last ten years, our length of stay has increased gradually for youth charged in both court systems. That spike in two thousand and twenty represents when the adult courts were largely shut down during the pandemic and not operational. But once things got up and running again, we see that the length of stay has come down for our youth charged as adults, and our length of stay is in the range of what we would expect to see with just normal growth over time. So in these last few slides, I do want to take a deeper dive just into some of the youth who are in DCYC on those adult court charges. And this is a snapshot from about three weeks ago, so our population as of August fourth. At that time, we had seventy-six youth in detention, twenty-seven of whom had been charged as adults. Of those, fifteen youth were on juvenile probation at the time of intake. With regard to length of stay, eight youth had been in DCYC for nine months or longer, and four had been in there for between six and eight months. And these cases are important to look at because these are the youth who are staying longer than that a hundred and ten-day average we looked at earlier. And so we are sort of looking into these cases, and we will be working with probation and the judges to really focus on these youth and the specifics of their cases to see if there's anything that we can do with case processing to speed their cases through the system. We had two youth who had been in detention for between three and five months, and the remainder had been in detention for less than ninety days. So all of the youth of color who were charged as adults at that time were boys. All but one were youth of color, and most of them were sixteen or seventeen years old.
Could those on Zoom please mute?
So with regard to the offenses for these youth charged as adults, ten had been charged with first-degree murder, twelve had been charged with use of a firearm to commit a felony, three had robbery charges, one had possession of a firearm, and one was charged with first-degree sexual assault. And then I've also included the lengths of stay for these youth on the slide. As you might expect, our longest lengths of stay have been for those youth who are charged with murder and then as well as sexual assault and the use of a firearm to commit a felony. And then one other area I wanted to look in is on youth who are in DCYC who had been there before. So earlier I mentioned that fifteen percent of our youth admitted this year have been admitted multiple times within two thousand and twenty-two. And on August fourth, fifty-eight of the seventy-six youth who were detained had been in DCYC at least once before. So of the fifty-eight on that day, forty-nine were on probation at their ti, at the time of their current intake. Fifteen were state wards, and thirteen youth were duly involved. They were in both the juvenile probation and child welfare systems. So that is the updates that I have for you today, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Friend?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. So Abby, that, the, thanks for the information. I, I, it is, it's always good. And, and thanks to Commissioner Rogers for continuing to provide, to give us this opportunity to go through these things, both you guys. On, on the last slide, the fifty-eight youth detained as of August fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, forty-eight of the fifty-eight were on juvenile probation at intake. Do, do you have any numbers, or do you, do you know how many of those youth were in some of the programs and services that we're providing right now? So in other words, if they're re-offending, what type of programs were they in when they re-offended? What, what do, what do those percentages look like? Do we know yet?
So not right now.
Maybe Chris knows.
I'd say we are working on, with the JDAI to do kind of a deeper dive into that, to see what the services look like. Commissioner Rogers, I don't know if you had more?
Commissioner Rogers?
Okay. If they're on probation, those wouldn't specifically be our programs. They would be programs that probation has. So we kick in at what's called the pre-adjudication piece. And so when, when they're on probation, oh, these are specific programs that they have contracted peace with. So that would be something that we would have to dig in the committee and ask probation.
Okay, so if, if I may.
Go ahead.
Final, final question for either of you. Are we statutorily omitted from actually implementing some of our programs with some of those probation youth?
No, and this bleeds a little bit into the conversation that we had last meeting and will continue to have at the Child Youth Service Committee. We're actually trying to see how do we make tweaks to the home program to be able to meet some of the need with that, some of those populations.
Okay. Okay. Thanks. Thanks, Abby. Appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions or comments for?
Can I make one?
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes, I, I just want to thank Abby again for the work and just the clarity that it shows. I mean, the point that I do want to point out is that, the slide that she went to on two, she wants to go back there. So if you look, twenty and twenty-one are the COVID years. And still, where we're at now, we're still below the pre-COVID times to some degree. So I just wanted to point out that things are trending and continue to with the emphasis of a combination of what's being done at the state, but also what the county has continued to do. So I, and I just want to note out and really reiterate, the smaller these numbers get, the more complex the individuals and the families that we, that are there, that we're dealing with. So even now, as, you know, data takes us on a new journey to find out what's what. If you go to slide, Abby, go to slide, your slide, which is, five. You see that trend continually to go down as far as admissions. That's what's even coming in. So it pointed out later in there, some of the repeat pieces. And I confirmed this with them to make sure I was on the right thought of thinking. You have the number going down overall trending, but with admissions going down and the numbers where we're where we're at, it speaks to a lot of process. And that's where this, where the, even to the students here today of the difference in the country between executive branch to judicial branch, a lot of this process is happening in another branch. And the question now is how do we work to do that? I'll note that the chair convened a meeting that we had, and my understanding is from Kim yesterday, is that the presiding judge and the state have been working to try to get at how do you eliminate some of the hindrances in this process from that slide? And other than that, I think, I think we're good.
If I may, the point that Commissioner Friend brought up on what programs and services they were on when they were readmitted to the youth center, regardless of it being our program or whose program, that might be good information. Because again, you know, as we establish and create additional programs and services, we want to make sure that we're hitting the right ones. And then those that are even on probation, and I don't know if this is for you or for Ms. Havicati, that we, we are also working on becoming a provider with probation so that we could be and give those programs to those kids as a, as a provider from probation. So that's being worked on as well. But I think your point is well taken, that we need to, again, that's another piece of data. As we narrow or reduce the number of children that we're looking at, I think Commissioner Rogers is right, their issues become very complex, but this will help us to see what else we need to establish in helping them and their families.
Absolutely.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yeah, briefly, on one kind of subtopic and speaking to the complexity of some of these cases, kind of going to page nine there, well, my page nine, the first slide regarding offenses, and that 10, 10 of these youth are charged with first degree murder, which kind of speaks to the bigger issue of more youth having gun charges and even first degree murder charges. I don't know if you could speak a little bit towards, you know, what kind of collective conversations, collective strategies are kind of being discussed or implemented with our partners in police and partners, judges and everybody involved in the system? Obviously, there's no easy answer to any of this, but what kind of shifts are perhaps in regards to more gun violence with our youth in Omaha?
Sure. And I'll have Kim, if I miss anything, but we do have a 2021 grant that we received from the federal government. It's about $900,000 over the course of three years. We are working with U-Turn out in the community to look at some of that violence interruption, gang and gun violence issues. So we're working with them on that project. We do have another federal grant for the 2018 Title II Racial and Ethnic Disparities that we're using to implement some community-based programs and services, or, excuse me, for our stability services, working with the home program. So if youth are charged with certain offenses, is there a way that we can get them out earlier? And sort of then partnering with our 2020-2021 Title II Racial and Ethnic Disparity Grant to get them those programs and services. So while they're out in the community under supervision, what sort of bridges are we building for them to, on that prevention and early intervention realm? I don't know if that quite answers your question.
Similarly, on the same topic, Kim, you want to say something?
Kim Havicati, Deputy County Administrator over Juvenile Justice. Yes, with regards to, I mean, there's no question, gun violence. When you look at our youth in detention, about 80 to 85% deal with some type of weapons charge. So we know that's a huge community issue we need to all work together on. Working with the city this summer, we did file a request, a federal grant that would be about a $1.5 million grant to work specifically on that issue in our community. Also, as a collaborative, we put together about eight to 10 people from law enforcement, from the federal prosecutors, the city, and state prosecutors to really start looking at the community issue. I think the issue is, Commissioner, is how do we get community members involved in helping to solve this issue?
Thank you for some of that insight. The last little piece, but still related to that topic, is when we have these individuals, youth adolescents who come in with these much more serious charges of first degree murder, what is our general practice in regards to, you know, they come to our youth detention center at the current one, and then what might be the practice at the new one in regards to, are they co-mingled with the rest of the youth that might be there for a much smaller charge? How do we handle kind of those that come in with these kind of first degree murder charges that are kind of a lot more grave than others?
Well, at the youth center, we do have a classification system that is used with every youth as they come in, because you have to look broader than what the charge or offense is as the youth comes in, because we don't know so much happens in the community. You can't put certain youth together because of their community relationships, especially some of the gang issues. Most of the youth charged with first degree murder are together unless there is some community issue that they cannot be. We try to keep those youth away from the other. But to answer also your question, Commissioner?
One minute.
The youth in detention, whether they're charged as an adult or juvenile, get the same services, the same educational services, the same mental behavioral health services. We do not differentiate in any of those type things with these youth, because they're still youth, they're still 16, 17-year-old youth.
For sure. Oh, I would for sure want them to get those same services that they need, of course, just thinking of kind of safety issues with some of them that might become, or that come in with higher behavioral issues or even criminal charges that end up in adult court. Just, just wondering how we go about those practices. But I appreciate both your insight today. Thank you.
All right. Okay. I think that's all for lights. Any other questions or comments from anyone on this topic? I will just add for our guests today, when the folks were talking about some federal grants that we received, and we talked about those public-private partnerships or the work that we do with nonprofits, this is exactly the area in which we work with all of those folks in to, again, provide those programs and services, both inside and outside of our youth center. So when you, when we talked about U-Turn, that's a nonprofit organization that we work with to help to address what is, as you can see, a growing issue with us, and that's gun violence in our community. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Again, thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we will move on to our committee meetings. Under Finance, it's the Budget Report as presented. And then we have a couple ARPA. First one is an approval of a resolution authorizing the award of $1,000, $100,000 to Omaha Equestrian Foundation to help fund the costs associated with hosting the 2023 FEI World Cup Finals in Omaha. This was brought to us by Commissioner Garcia's ARPA allocation. And then Commissioner Borges and Boyle and Morgan also invested some of their ARPA funds into this initiative. So with that, do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments?
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue. Since you put it that way, I do have a question on Committee Report Number Four, Finance Report Number Four on ARPA funding.
Okay, can you wait till we get to that when we're on number two right now?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. With that, no questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next item is approval of resolution setting preliminary tax rates for miscellaneous subdivisions as provided by Nebraska Statute 77-3443. This is brought to us by our county finance director, Mr. Joe Lorenz. Did you want to say anything? Okay, is there a motion to approve? It's a second? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next is item four, ARPA funding approval of resolution authorizing the award of $228,185 to the Omaha For Us to help fund the launch of an LGBTQ+ center focusing on behavioral health access for marginalized population dealing with mental health crisis. This was brought to us by Commissioner Boyle's investment of her ARPA funds. And others that invested were Commissioner Rogers and Commissioner Morgan. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. My first question is, why shouldn't we get to do this before you vote? Second question is, I don't understand all the federal laws and everything, but the Equality Clause seems to supersede any special laws that might be passed in relation to LGBTQ, which are specialty classes of people that are not equal to other people. The other people aren't getting a special recognition, a special class, classification like me. I'm just an ordinary citizen. The next question is, the city charter apparently is in disarray, being fixed, and they're going to insert these special classes for this and one other. I forget what it is. I don't have it in front of me. They may or may not do that today, but I've been listening to their debates. They're all very confused about it. Even their lawyers don't know if it's constitutional or not. So maybe you should be doing this today. Title IX, maybe, is all in the airwaves right now and in the World Herald, maybe because they know you were going to have this today. And there is a story about this today, but it won't come up on the, on the electronic version. So I guess the World Herald is preceding your discussion here today and your vote. But this may very well be unconstitutional. It needs to be discussed openly with back and forth with the citizens.
Thank you, Larry. Commissioner Boyle?
So I submitted this resolution as part of the American Rescue Plan Act funding that was allocated to me, and then Commissioner Rogers, Commissioners Rogers and Morgan joined me. This is really about mental health. And so, especially with the, the actions of the archdiocese of Omaha over the past week stating that, that kids who have, are questioning or just having issues with their sexuality and their gender identity, that basically they just need to be quiet. I just felt that these students, these children are being ostracized. And so talk about a mental health crisis. I mean, if anybody's feeling it at this point, it would be that particular population. So John Carl Denkovich and I met about several weeks ago, actually, to discuss this, and I felt a sense of urgency to get it on the agenda today, just to make sure that the kids in our community know that, that they, they may, in their circumstance where they go to school, in their church, may not feel welcomed, but I want to make sure that they understand that, that we welcome them, that we want them to feel included, and that they deserve love and kindness and compassion. And to, and for that reason, I've asked John Carl to come and speak to, to inform everyone what this program is all about, so.
Could we, before you speak, could I ask Commissioner Friend to go first?
Thanks.
Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Maureen spoke, Maureen, Commissioner, Commissioner Boyle spoke very eloquently about one of the reasons that this should be funded. This is a perfect example of where, in, in practical terms, her and I agree, it should be funded. But in philosophical terms, and, and a lot of the things that, you know, you would think that we would either agree on, or people don't know anything about, and, and what we think about, I, she had brought up the archdiocese, and I don't think that the archdiocese necessarily, and she didn't say this, but I don't think the archdiocese really felt like, under the circumstances, they had any choice. What I do know, or what I feel in my heart, is that there are, and I agree with Commissioner Boyle 100%, these do associate with community mental health issues. I mean, there are a lot of, and, and the, let's be frank, the archdiocese is not in the, the business nor equipped to deal with all of those. What they're trying to do is be as practical as they possibly can. As far as money that's sent from the federal government that is for the type of things that we have been directed statutorily to fund, this fits into that category, and that's why we're going to fund it. We funded all kinds of things before you all were here, before anybody's been watching us. We funded all kinds of things that I disagreed with. We funded all kinds of things that every one of these commissioners disagreed with. But we funded it because we knew the practical solution and what the federal government actually wanted and directed of us was viable. It has to happen. So Commissioner Boyle and I and others on this board could sit around over lunch, or we could go afterward and have fun and just debate about issues, what, the type of things that are happening in our society. That's fine. Let's do it. But from a practical standpoint, and what we're actually trying to do to help people in our community, this fits the bill. So that's why I'm going to vote yes. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Friend, and then Commissioner Boyle, do you want to introduce your guest?
Yep. So this is John Carl Denkovich. He, or they are a part of the Omaha For Us, trying to launch an LGBTQ center, since there really isn't one in Omaha. And to have a city of our size not have some type of place to go, I think is, is really a sad thing. And so, so here, they're on the right track to kind of get things going. So with that, John Carl, if you have something to say?
Yeah, thank you so much. Good morning, Commissioners. Thanks for having me. My name is John Carl Denkovich, J-O-H-N-C-A-R-L-D-E-N-K-O-V-I-C-H, and the address is 2101 South 42nd Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68105. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today. And I'm so grateful that both of you all were able to precede these comments. That makes my job a little bit easier. So Omaha is one of only seven of the country's top 50 cities without an LGBTQ+ center. As a result of that, we see among the community a large array of small, largely under-resourced or underfunded grassroots organizations without paid staff springing up to fill the gaps that a center would normally fill as a central organizing point for launching these types of human services. And, you know, I'll be relatively brief and just say that Omaha For Us is a registered 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, and our mission is really to deliver culturally responsive human and social services to LGBTQ+ individuals and families of Eastern Nebraska and Western Iowa through an Omaha-based center. And I want to be very clear that the, that the funds that were requested is to specifically support mental health and not the specific building of any building or construction or anything of that nature. So this program specifically provides, or helps us provide quality, affordable, and accessible clinical counseling and facilitated peer support groups to these individuals and families that are seeking support. In the most recent needs assessment that was done in 2019, four in five LGBTQ+ respondents in the city of Omaha reported serious mental health concerns. And in the previous assessment, 50% reported seriously considering suicide, and one in three reported being unable to seek care at least once in the previous year due to cost. And it's our hope that this program will help us begin to fill the gaps and address the serious need as these mental health impacts are far greater in the LGBTQ+ community than their heterosexual and cisgender counterparts. And because this historically marginalized population experiences these disparate health outcomes, it's our hope that this type of funding will, will assist us in addressing those specifically. And I'll just conclude by expressing my continued gratitude to all. And I'll just conclude by expressing my continued gratitude to all of you, both for your consideration of the proposal, for your anticipated support that I'm hoping for, and I respectfully ask that you vote in the affirmative, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. I need to apologize because we did try to get a meeting, and I still want that. I just had a death in the family and was unable to get everything connected. So if we could still meet, I would be very happy to do so.
Absolutely. I'll never turn down a meeting with any of you, so...
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
We didn't have a, did we have a motion?
No, we do. Commissioner Boyle and seconded by Commissioner Rogers.
Roger, okay. Any further questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay. With that, we will move on to Human Resources, the weekly personnel report from civil service as presented. No legislative items at this time. There is an HR committee meeting that will take place at 2:30 today in room 903. We do have need for an executive session for legal advice, litigation, union negotiations, personnel, and security. Is there a motion to go in for those purposes? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Friend. Please vote. And as we're voting and going into executive session for our guest in the room, this is where we go into a closed session, where we talk about things, again, of those natures that I just mentioned. And so, Val, I don't know if you had other things to do, or if you wanted to stay around and chat with those that are in the room, that's fine, too. But if you're gone when we come back, I just want to, again, thank you all for being with us today and wish you the best of luck in your endeavors, and hope to hear from some of you and what you've accomplished over your course. So thank you very much for being with us.
Commissioner Garcia and Commissioner Morgan?
I think they have.
Sorry.
Who did you need?
Commissioner Morgan.
Morgan? Commissioner Morgan? You need to vote?
You're okay. Motion passes six to zero.
If you had many people.
Motion to adjourn passes six to zero.
See you.